Good morning. Be calling this work session meeting for February 23rd, 2021 to order. If you can please join me for the pledge of allegiance and the salute to a state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Next item on the agenda is to approve the work session agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our work session there under presentations. Be a presentation by Hila National Forest Silver City Ranger District. Beth, do we have her?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for giving us a few minutes this morning to talk about what's going on on the Hila Forest or the Silver City Ranger District in particular today. I didn't need to take a lot of time. I just wanted to do some updates. One of them is that we will be reopening our recreation sites, our campgrounds, the Gomez Peak facilities, starting March 15th. Just an FYI is the facilities that we have traditionally rented to the public, we're going to be putting them under recreation.gov as the reservation, I guess, carrier for those sites. So people will be able to have access through their computer. They don't have to walk in the office to make a reservation to use the site. So there'll be more information coming in on that, but it gives people more access to think about their reservation to get them in. So that is coming. And so camper on Highway 152, Cherry Creek and McMillan will be reopening middle of March. We are doing fuels projects today as we speak. We have a pile burning project. These were suppression piles left from the Tappole Fire in the Bear Creek area right next to Highway 15. So folks are on that highway and they see signs about smoke. That is what is going on there. We have two other planned prescribed burns in and around Silver City. The Bar Six Burn, which is in the burrows, north of the Red Rock Road. Just FYI, we've been in dialogue with the Continental by Trails Coalition folks to use their website. While we are doing the blacklining and the actual burning, we will have that area closed, which cuts people off from hiking through on the trails when that activity is going on. Pretty short term, so we have some reroutes that we're looking at doing. So it should be, you know, it might be convenient for a few folks, but we've been trying to get that burn for a while. The other burn we're doing is called Saw Melt. This is all conditions are right. And the Saw Melt Burn is just south of the Oak Grove subdivision. So anyway, those are prescribed burns. If, I don't see Henry Provencio, who is the detail ranger at the Wilderness District over in the Membras, and they have what's called El Barti East as a prescribed burn, which is on the east side of Highway 35 near the North Star Road. So I know that that project is on their plate for this spring as well as some pile. They've been doing pile burnings and I think they're not quite done with it. This year, we have quite an extensive trails program of work, which is, I think, good news for the cooperators as well as the forest. So there's a, the forest was awarded funds through the Great American Outdoors Act to do trail maintenance work. And so we have been working with local partners, including the Backcountry Horsemen and the Heart of Hila, as well as other partners we're getting developed to get those projects where we're done. And there's a big focus on trails in the Hila Wilderness. And as a lot of backcountry folks understand, those trails are in various shapes. And so this is a, this is going to bring more capacity to getting more trails maintained. And I think that's a, that's a really good effort that was instigated by Crystal Osborne and Matt Schultz at our forest level. But a lot of those trails are in and around the backdrop of Silver City and the Hila Wilderness. So that's really good news. And then we continue to work with Santa Clara and on things related to Fort Baird and the facility out there and ensuring they have a good plan for working on those buildings. So the only other projects that I have to visit about is, and this is a little bit different than we've seen in the past, is we have a mineral exploration project for the southwest corner of the burrows near Night Peak, and it's an exploration drilling project. And we haven't had one of those in quite a while. It's a relatively small proposal, up to 14 drill locations, and there, I guess, temporary access roads to get to those. We are at the very beginning stages of evaluating that proposal, and there was an article in the paper to make comments on that. I think it happened, I think we saw it in the paper Friday or Saturday. And we are continuing to evaluate the piece of the Tyrone Mine modification that is in the little, the mine area called the Little Rock Mine. And a small part of that project modification is on national forest lands. The primary part of that project activity is on BLM and Pride Land. So we are working with the BLM on the evaluations that we need to do for that, and we will be sending out a scoping on that project, those activities on the public lands piece as well. So those are the primary activities that we have going on this spring, as well as, you know, doing our usual spring, you know, fire season prep and stuff like that. So that's, those were the main topics that I had to visit about today, and I can take questions if anybody has them. We have a few minutes to go, or we have time for that.
Thank you, Beth. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Good morning, Beth. Thank you for that update. Appreciate hearing from you. I have some questions about the exploration, the mineral well exploration, whatever the heck you want to call that. What is a well? What does that mean when you talk about a mineral exploration well?
Okay, so what this company is proposing is exploration drilling. And in their case, their proposal is for core drilling. So essentially, as mineral exploration goes, is they will, they will sample what they can have access to on the surface until they need more information, which they would have to collect in the subsurface. So they would be drilling these three inch or less diameter drill holes. And the way the drill works is then they can pull out a cylindrical rock sample to where then they can evaluate what they are seeing in the subsurface to make more three-dimensional pictures of what they think is the mineralization on that, that project area that they're looking at. So there are four holes. The state of New Mexico has a role in the permitting and then the reclamation of that kind of a project. There's a plugging protocol that they have to go through. They can't leave the holes open. So they would be bonded for that activity ahead of their actual drilling. And so that's, that's just, it's a, it's the next step in an exploration project. So that's how I understand it, anyway.
So two more questions. So did I hear you say that there would need to be access roads built for them to get to where they want to be?
So at this moment, they, there's an open forest road to most of the area. Then they have places where they're trying to place their drill pads to have minimum impact. We'll have a better understanding what that looks like when we get out there because minimum impact could also be avoiding heritage sites so that we don't have to do an evaluation that includes effect, a negative effect to a heritage site. So the country where they are working in, some of it is pretty mild terrain. So they're, part of their proposal is to drive across country to get to some of these pad locations, which means then they're going to end up with, you know, they go in and out with enough vehicles, enough time, they're going to have to rehab those two tracks to remove the evidence of them. If they're on, there are some, what I would call non-system roads out in that country. I don't know which are, which of those might be utilized for their drilling, and that gives us an opportunity to evaluate those, to rehab them on the way out as well. So they are not proposing new road, permanent road construction, nor are we interested in considering anything like that. It's exploration. There shouldn't be anything that ends up being permanent at this point of a project.
So what if in one of those, so this is on national forest land. So if they do, if they find enough of whatever it is they're looking for, copper or whatever else they're looking for, to want to go beyond exploration, what is, what does beyond exploration look like?
So I, I can't speak for them on that. I would, here'd be my impression is that they would want to do further drilling, that this exploration drilling, is that this gives them sense for whether or not they want to expend resources and keep going. In the development of a mineral, a potential mineral location, you know, there's quite a bit of investment that they would go into before they, you know, in figuring out more of that three-dimensional picture before they would say, come in with a mining proposal. And so I, I just see if they, if they find favorable values, they would come in and try and do more drilling, because they're trying to define this thing that they want to follow more by. And they have gone there, you know? It's an old mining district, but it wasn't heavily developed out there. And so as far as what they would do next, you know, it's, it's their proposal to submit, really not ours. So I would see more of the same, maybe with more infill, more concentration. And if it's not good, that could be it. They could be done.
Can you give me an example of a, a mine that is currently operating on national, on forest service land?
Well, the Little Rock Mine is on, a little piece of it's on national forest land. The piece that's on national forest with the Little Rock Mine of the Tyrone operations is one of their piles, one of their tailings piles, reclaimed tailings pile. Are you talking like active mining?
Yeah.
So, so the closest one, and it's not, it's been a quartzite mine, is the, what we call it locally here, and it's the only one that I know of on the Hila Forest, is the, other than the Tyrone operations, is KB Mine. And that mine is over by Santa Clara, and it's a quartzite mine. So that prospect or that deposit, quartzite, it's really hard material, and it has been used over the years as, when they, they mine it, they crush it as bedding material for an application for the Chino operations. They don't take a lot of material out of that mine. It's, you know, maybe a couple thousand yards a year, not even consistent every year. So, but it's over off of, off of the highway as you head towards the Chino Mine.
The KB?
Okay, well, I don't want to take all day on this, but I do have one, I think, one more question. So you said, when I asked the question about, you know, what's next after exploration drilling, you said that, you know, it's up to the mine company, obviously, to do a proposal. But there is a forest service side of this. You know, I would assume, correct me if I'm wrong, that there would be a lot of forest service input into what would happen on that land. And am I correct in assuming that there would be some benefit to the forest service for doing this? Do they pay fair market value for the land they're occupying? How does that work?
So unlike leasable minerals, the forest service doesn't get a mineral royalty, right? So in the case of a hard rock, or call it hard rock, where it's metallic minerals, the forest service has regulations where we evaluate these projects with the, you know, it lays out the process for going through authorizing them, as well as we have to follow NIPA. So any, as a, as a hard rock mineral project, we're, we're bound by those regulations and how we evaluate their project and what, what our responses to a proposal from them look like. So in the case of a mineral company where they're in an area where if they're, they got a piece of equipment or we need, we're looking at some mitigations for their project, some companies are receptive to that kind of thing. It's, it's, yeah. I think, you know, I don't know what the circumstances would be out there yet, because we're just meeting with them in the field for the first time this week.
So when you say the forest service doesn't get any mineral royalties from that, so essentially what you're saying is this is public land that belongs to the public, and there's no benefit to the public to have that mine on that forest service land?
Here's what I would tell you, is we have to follow our regulations, and our regulations are tied to the 1872 Mining Law ultimately. And when an entity locates unpatented mining claims on the federal land estate, they are asserting a right to the minerals against the government. And that's in law. So it's, you know, so it's one of those things that goes with public land administration, one of the encumbrances of the laws that we have to follow.
Okay, so I get that part, but the answer to the question is no, the public doesn't get any benefit, basically, right? It's an encompass.
Well, it depends.
I mean, I guess we get the benefit, you know, in our iPhone 25 years down the road, but there's no direct benefit to the forest service for trail maintenance.
As far as a, I guess, Alicia, trying to, how would you say, justify the activity? That's not where we are able to go there because of the structure and function of how we work.
Okay.
So, you know, that's for the public to provide in their comments.
Okay.
I'm going to turn it now, Jason. Is that better? I, I hear echo.
We hear you.
We hear you fine.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Beth.
So, Beth, just for the public, this is, what company is doing this exploration?
They are called Bronco Creek Exploration, and they're out of Arizona.
Yes, that's right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brown, did you, you had a question, correct?
Well, I was just going to add on, I want to compliment Beth on her diplomacy. The, she's, you know, she mentioned the General Mining Act of 1872. This, although later than most of what we think of as manifest destiny, is part of manifest destiny. The whole idea of the law was the public benefited by opening the West to European colonization. So this was part of that. Giving away public land that we had just acquired through conquest, partly to miners, was considered a public benefit all by itself because the public was narrowly defined as the Europeans on the East Coast, and this was a way to develop. One thing to note, in addition to the fact that we don't get royalties, is the fact that when a company makes an economically viable discovery and patents the land that those minerals are under, there's very little anybody can do to prevent them from patenting it, because that's part of the ideology of the law, is you want it to be given over to private owners exploiting the land. They pay between $2.50 and $5.00 per acre, which was the value established in 1872 under Ulysses as grant for the land. That has not changed in 150 years, which is, at this point, in our current context, completely absurd. No longer serves any legitimate purpose in my mind, but that's not Beth's fault. It's not the forest service's fault, not even the USDA's fault, right? That's Congress's fault. That law needs to be reformed. It has needed that for decades. So thanks for letting me rant about that. As far as this company, you know, what they specialize in is, is exploring, identifying material, minerals, and then partnering with other companies to get those minerals out and processed into market. So I think that's a partial answer to what might happen next, is they would be looking for investors to join them in developing the area further. And other than the state permitting process that Beth referred to, there's very little handle for anybody to intervene. So I think that's all I have to say about this. I really appreciate your presentation, Beth. Very even-handed. Thank you.
Yeah, I would second that and your, and your diplomacy skills.
Commissioner.
We will, we can keep folks surprised, you know, we're going to be doing input for this proposal, and there will be a decision that will be a result of that evaluation of everything is same setting. We have to coordinate with the state because we try and coordinate with them on who holds the bond and in the reclamation calculation. So that work is yet to come.
Beth, can you tell me again where the exploration is at? Can you tell me again where the exploration is?
I did not hear that.
Can you tell me again where the exploration is at? The drilling?
It's near Night's Peak.
Do you know where Night Peak is? On the Mill Canyon Road, so when you're on Highway 90 headed towards Lord'sburg, it's the last primary forest access to the north. And Night Peak is like the first bridge you see when you're looking at the burrows from the west. And so you go north on, of the highway above four miles or so, three, four miles to the project area where they're identified they're drilling.
Yes, close to Thompson Canyon, I guess. Okay, I, I know now. Thank you.
Okay, no worries. I just couldn't tell what you were, I couldn't, I heard you. Sorry about that.
Anything, anything else for, for? Hey, Beth, thank you. We appreciate that update, and you have a good day.
All right, thank you. You see smoke coming from north of PA. It's pile burning. Don't be worried.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to next item is going to be a report from the Grant County Health Council.
My name is Carrie Lafferty. I'm the coordinator of the Grant County Community Health Council. I will be sharing most of my time with my colleagues on the EID Task Force, AKA the COVID-19 Task Force. But before I turn it over to them, I'd like to announce some exciting changes in the structure of the Health Council. Earlier this month, the Steering Committee extended invitations for affiliation to six networks working on individual but necessarily overlapping focus areas in Grant County. And under recently updated bylaws, the chairs of each of these newly affiliated networks will become members of the Steering Committee. So this represents a more than doubling of the membership of the Steering Committee, and we're very excited about this. I'd like to read you the list, and as I said, I will be reading it so I don't make any mistakes. The Anti-Poverty and Economic Development Network will be led by Karen Whitlock. Children Youth and Services Network will be led by Dr. Cindy Martinez. The Emerging Infectious Diseases Network will be led by Dr. Renee DePree. Government Safety and Public Policy Network will be led by Jeff Bell. Thank you, Jeff. The Outreach Prevention and Public Policy Network will be led by Steve Chavera. And we also have a Senior Services Network. We've not formalized leadership of that, so I can't announce it at this time. That said, that is, concludes my announcements, and I will be turning the remainder of our time over to Jeff Bell and Dr. Renee DePree to discuss the COVID-19 outreach and efforts in Grant County. And I'd just like to say, having come on board in January, I am overwhelmed by how impressed I am with their efforts and how much the EID Task Force has done. And I am grateful to Dr. DePree and to Mr. Bell and all members of the committee. It's just amazing what they've done, and I hand it over to them.
Thanks, Carrie. We are all looking forward to moving forward with the Community Health Council. Good morning, Commissioners and staff. So Dr. DePree and I are here again to just give you a quick update. Our format's changed a little bit for this month. Here in a second, Dr. DePree is going to just cover some real, what we consider three important highlights of the work that's going on. I'll give you a quick update on vaccine status in the county, and then we'll open it up for questions. So, Dr. DePree.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Commissioners. Um, we're just going through everything. I did share our, I'm calling it, I kind of sort of submitted a report, and I tried to figure this, as often in the camp, this report's up to 21 pages, so it's, it's got a lot of detail, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. So the three things that really have risen to the fore in our work lately have been, first of all, the real need to continue to move from yellow to green, and it's really dependent on a couple of things. One piece is accessibility and availability of rapid antigen tests, so we can test quickly and get a hold of it as we continue our test, our testing strategy. And to complement that, we are working to build a program that we're calling Grant Home Chairs, which essentially is a program to develop wraparound services for all of those impacted by COVID. And in terms of people who And in terms of people who have a positive for the case in their household, to ensure that they have quarantine supports that they need so they can stay home, they can isolate, and that the burden of the disease does not fall on our responsible populations as it has. As you can imagine, many, many residents who are living paycheck to paycheck. The idea of a household not needing to work for a month is just financially a wreck and the chance that this season, so that's what the Grant County Chairs Program is all about, to try to find the mechanisms and the resources for that to happen. And one of the issues which concern is the increase in mental health distress and our mental stress in our county. We haven't seen the data yet, but it was reported by Captain Lawrence, the Silver City Police Department, that there has been an leveling in overdose deaths in the pandemic. We are working with area providers to ensure that we have enough support for all people and even working as part of the Grant County Chairs Program to address the isolation and other things and especially our seniors, I feel. So that is a huge piece. And then the third thing, which is more of an infrastructure piece, is and as we're moving forward with the Health Council, I think that we will be addressing these, but just so that you know that we are trying to find appropriate mechanisms so that funding can come to the Task Force for the work. We have tens and tens of thousands of volunteer hours that we put in to make this happen. I personally have volunteered approximately 48 hours a week. And I know Jeff has been spending a tremendous amount of time himself and that is, again, a donation from the Silver City, the town of Silver City for his time. So all of the time that is being put in for the Task Force, it has a cost somewhere. And so we are trying to find ways to fund it that's more sustainable and working with the Health Council to create those mechanisms. As you know, the counties that dislocate from the Health Council, however, federal law of course prohibits government entities from receiving private foundation funding. So we're just trying to find appropriate legal ways for that to happen. So that's pretty much the layout. To open up questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. DePree. So I will just cover some of the vaccination data for the county. Up to about two weeks ago, I was doing my best to track vaccination numbers. And two things happened recently. Number one, more providers of vaccine within the county have started giving vaccines so it's been more difficult to keep in touch with all of them on a weekly basis, which is a good thing. And two, the state started reporting out the same numbers basically that I was compiling. So we have decided to use the New Mexico Department of Health Vaccine Dashboard as our source of progress for vaccination within Grant County. So you can find that on the Department of Health website. And some of the data that you'll see on there is, shows a population for Grant County of 23,111. I think it's important to note that, I think what they've done there is they've just removed the younger population.
Right.
One of the current vaccines is approved for 16 and over. The other vaccine is currently approved for 18 and over. So I believe they've removed those, the younger population to give an estimated population of 23,111. Two other numbers that they put on there is partially vaccinated and fully vaccinated. So the state estimates that currently in Grant County, we have partially vaccinated 19.4% of our county. Roughly 4,472 individuals have at least received the first shot out of the two-shot series. Out of that, basically about half, a little less than half, 8.1% are fully vaccinated and have received both shots. So 1,879 residents have received both doses. They don't really break that down whether that was during Pfizer. Honestly, it really doesn't matter just because of all of these vaccines, both the vaccines that are currently approved are working really, really well. Quick update on the Johnson. Johnson, that's one thing, especially in rural parts of the country, really looking forward to that becoming approved hopefully. I know the committee meets this Friday to discuss the approval of emergency use authorization for Johnson-Johnson. The big game changer on that is it is a single-dose vaccine. So not having to have people come into a vaccination site or into a clinic twice is gonna be very, very, a big step forward. Our local providers, I'll just go over there real quick. The Department of Health, we run a clinic there with Margaret Diaz and her staff on a weekly basis. It's a drive-through clinic. We're gonna see about 500 people tomorrow come through her clinic. We try to schedule those on Wednesdays. But also HMS, Silver Healthcare, the hospital, and Walgreens and Walmart have recently come online with providing vaccines to the public. So with that, I think that concludes our presentation. So we'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Sonas.
You haven't been notified about getting the vaccine. Is there any follow-up we should do?
One of the things that we suggest is for people to go back into your registration portal, get back on the registration website, log back in, and just make sure that all your questionnaires are filled out. One thing that some people have found is they realize that they might have missed one of the questionnaires that the state has on there. So just getting back online, verify that all of that is completed as far as possible is the best thing that they can do. We have asked the state to, do you remember a couple of weeks ago, they sent out a message just basically telling people, you know, you're still in the queue, you're still in the system. You know, we're working through the process. So we've asked the state to do that a little bit more frequently just to give people some communication that, you know, that we haven't been forgotten about.
Thank you. Any other quick Commissioner's words?
I just wanna say that this report is amazing and again, thank you so much to both you and Renee and everybody else that is working so hard on this. We really, really, really appreciate the amount of work that you've done. And personally, I think this is extremely valuable to our community and can't thank you enough for doing what you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions? Thank you guys and thanks for everything that you're doing. Guys, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda is gonna be a report, High Desert Humane Society Annual Report.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me today. I'm Heidi O'Gosse, President of the High Desert Humane Society. And you should have received the handouts. The first one that I can take a look at is the annual tape for Grant County 2021. And I won't read all of the numbers there. I'm getting an echo also. I won't read all of the numbers there, but I, across the bottom, are totals. We did have 102 dogs impounded, 101 stray, and 150 owner turn-ins for a total of 353 incoming dogs. We did return 94 to their owner. On the cats, we had a total of eight impounded cats. We had 169 stray cats come in. And 146 owner turn-in for a total of 323 total cats. And 11 were to return to their owners. We took in $3,100 in in-town fees and $7,195.40 in licensing. And that is up from the previous year on the licensing. From the society as a whole, our customers shop, raised enough money to issue out 980 horse bay and neuter assistance coupons. And we did adopt out 444 animals. And of the 444, 273 went to county residents. And we were able to return 212 animals total to their owners. You know, the transition from giving up animal control, which we had taken care of for almost 37 years, that had its challenges, but I think things are starting to go fairly well. I did wanna give you just a breakdown of last, in last year's numbers of the impounded animals that came in. The Humane Society did animal control for the first six months and they brought in three animals. ACO Gilbert did the second six months. He brought in 24 animals. Also, ACO Tony, who is the city animal control officer, she had been cross-commissioned to help with the areas of the county and she brought in 23 animals. And the Sheriff's Department brought in 35 animals. So a good community effort here. I've been working with Sheriff Gomez and Mike Burns from the Sheriff's Department and we've also been working with ACO Gilbert helping to try to get through some of the transitional issues that we've had, mostly with the after-hours weekends. We've redone a form now that I think Mike helped with with some of the information he needs so that we can process the animals correctly. So does anybody have any questions on that at this point?
No, Heidi, thank you. No questions right now.
Nope.
Thanks Heidi.
The other two sheets are just year comparison. The total animal intake for Grant County was down in 2020. And of course, I can only speculate that that had to do with the pandemic. People were able to spend more time at home with their animals. They weren't getting out so much. So it did go down quite a bit in both dogs and in cats. And I graphed that out for you on the third sheet. And then also, because I get asked a lot, compared to the town of Silver City. So I graphed that out. Pretty consistent there. The city also saw a decrease in intake. Any questions?
No, no questions Heidi, not right now. Thank you.
Now, if there's no question, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you Heidi.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item is gonna be a report to our Veteran Services. Jason?
Good morning, Commissioner Jeff. This is the Board for someone taking a audience. I'm gonna give you guys a little bit of background where to go into my presentation. What I did need to actually do this presentation is that I read the minutes. The recent missing BSO for the area has caught the attention of quite a few people. That person services both Sierra County and Grant County. So it's a huge missing piece and I'll explain why as we shortly go along. Now, myself, I'm actually Veteran Affairs Manager at Western New Mexico University. I just recently moved this position. Now, while most of my job is focused towards veterans here at the university, the other part of that is the community aspect and I think is the vital thing that we need to have addressed with Grant County because there is a huge amount of people that are going unserved because of that missing BSO. I'm gonna go ahead and start sharing my screen. Just give me one moment. Start it up. Now, basically, this is just a proposal to the Board to develop a Veterans Coalition. Now, what this coalition will do is they'll develop a board to replace the BSO. And I'll go into this a little bit further because Sierra County essentially is. If we look at just the numbers overall, our census population from 2015 to 2019 was around 26,980 people here in Grant County. Now of that, we have a massive veteran population. And between that same category, 1,505 of our residents are veterans. That's nearly 10%. Though 9.46% of the population is veterans. Now for comparison, now, just kinda take out the large numbers in this regard, but the Gonyan County, they have a population of 218,895. Their veteran population is around 14,276. That's 6.52% of their population that are veterans. And similarly, Burnley County with 679,000 residents, they have 47,654, so 7.01% of their population are veterans. Now, some of the services that we have here to foreign veterans are the VA Clinic, my office here at the university, the Veterans of Foreign Word, which is listed on here, but since it's been closed. The American Legion, which at times is very difficult to get a hold of some of those folks there. The Fort Mayer National Cemetery and small support groups in the surrounding area. So to say the least, as a rural population, we don't have too many services that are available to all 2,555 residents that are veterans. So what position of the BSO does is he interviews and investigates, and I pulled this directly from their site. He interviews or she investigates applicants and recipients of public assistance, including but not limited to, public housing, medical assistance, and other government programs and grants. They also determine the expenditures and evaluate reimbursable cost statements. That's for folks that are actually going to travel or services at like VA Clinic if they're going through their compensation package or something along those lines. And they also provide information for applicants whenever they're actually submitting a compensation package to the VA. Now, the position acts as a liaison assisting veterans in need of guidance and assistance and obtaining proper care and services needed to become successful in various aspects of their life. Now, as we know, we're coming off one of the longest-standing wars in the history of the US. I believe it took us 17 years to finally stop, or to no longer declare war, though we still do maintain a presence in that region. That being said, we are seeing a huge influx of people that are coming out with issues of PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorder, sorry, post-traumatic stress disorder disabilities and that results in substance abuse and various other issues. Now, if we look, I broke this down for everybody. I'm not gonna jump too deep into this because that'd just be a whole lot of reading. But I did break down exactly how many people are suffering from those issues. Now, if we, I just wanna kinda highlight the Vietnam veterans in this area because there is a huge population of Vietnam veterans that's here. And about 30% of them are suffering from PTSD, which again, results in substance abuse and other various issues. A lot of the times, those folks, they don't have a general understanding of how to submit their compensation packages. A lot of this is now computer-based. So they're usually lost. And that BSO typically takes the position in order to actually do that for them and guide them through the process in order to get the compensation that they deserve. So the Sierra County response, and this is kinda what I'm just highlighting real quick. Obviously, we're gonna have a little bit of a change here in Grant County. But in Sierra County, they recognized the need for the position and they created the substitution. And in that substitution, local officials and supported by their legislators, they developed a coalition. And they developed a quality candidate to serve on the Board to basically replace the position of the BSO. Not completely because they don't have the full understanding of how to go about doing the job of the BSO. But now they are acting as the liaison between the veteran But now they are acting as the liaison between the veteran and the state. So what did that do? They, they developed a primary needs of the veterans. So they asked local veterans the questions about what they wanted to, what they wanted to have serviced for them there in Sierra County. They also engaged their stakeholders. That included their state legislatures and executives and directors. They identified service providers in the area. This was really neat because they started to try to service health needs of the veterans that were there, that where they didn't have to travel all the way to Albuquerque in a pandemic. That's probably one of the best possible options that we can actually go about right now. They also established commitment from Secretary Smith to have regular interagency meetings with the DOH, HSD, Media Agent, agent of long-term services to ensure no veteran falls through Grant, which more and more, we're actually seeing that with the advent of the pandemic and our responses to it. Now, they also produced a veterans pamphlet for Sierra County and Grant County. I actually supported in that role as well. So my proposal to Grant County is if we mirror something similar to the proactive approach that Sierra County took, then the two miss, the two counties can actually work together in this regard and really service the, the area where the VSO is missing. Now, what I'm asking for is for one of the commissioners to take the champion lead on this. And any one of you that have vested interest in the services, I would, I would love the help. And what we're going to be doing is doing like an outreach and development of the board. So we reach out to the community and find those members that are interested in actually serving on this board. Now, once the board is developing, developed, the responsibility falls on the board and we continue, they continue the liaison activities. And any of the supporting members in the coalition kind of take a step back and allow the board to do their, their duties. And we act as ad hoc members in support. So in my role, what I did with Sierra County was I acted as the, as the technological support. So a lot of the times I organized the Zoom meetings so we could actually maintain that social distancing and maintain safe practices during this pandemic. Now, that pretty much concludes my presentation. I have all of the data here. If you guys feel free, you can go ahead and, and look into all the information in here. And with that, I'm open to questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Here, hopefully soon, I'm going to, probably within the next couple of days, I'll get your contact information. Because I have been getting quite a bit of calls on medical assistance stuff. Maybe we can talk a little bit about it so I can understand it a little better and go from there. But, you know, these questions that have been asked are probably best suited for my next meeting today at 4:30. So just, I'll get, I guess, I guess I can get your information from Tisha or Sharnine and I'll give you a call. Maybe we can set up a time. Thank you. And does anyone have any question? Commissioner Edwards?
Hi, Jason. Thank you so much for the presentation. Appreciate you taking the time. Is the VFW closed permanently or just closed during the pandemic?
I'm not entirely sure. I haven't seen it too active, to be quite honest, ever since I moved back. And I was back in 2011. So I didn't actively go there or anything, but from my understanding, they're, they're closed right now. And it may be due to the pandemic. I probably need to look into that a little bit.
And then my second question is, I probably heard this when we talked about this originally, but I just don't remember the answer. What happened to our VSO position? And given the level of work that you're undertaking to try to come up with an alternative, I would have to assume that there's no hope of getting a VSO position anytime soon? Is that true?
So they presented some of this to the states. I'm not entirely sure how quickly this is going to take a foothold. But they did make Grant County and Sierra County a, a priority in that regard. So I know that we're on, we're under the microscope right now with, with regards to the missing VSO. Now, from my understanding, what happened was the previous VSO that was here, they did a, an analysis on how many people that he met with per month. And he said something around around eight. And with that, they said it wasn't fiscally responsible to, to keep the VSO position. So they retracted it back to Las Cruces. And now it sits with George Vargas, who is also the director for the Southwest Region. And I, I just think that that's probably a little bit too much for him on his plate, being both the Southwest Director and the VSO for both Sierra County and Grant County, especially with the distance that we have between the two, between the counties in order to have those services.
Well, and if we have 2,500 veterans, meeting with eight a month is, let's see, how shall I say this tactfully? I'm not, I'm not very tactful when it comes to Southwest, but there's a lot of room for improvement there. And so I would just say that, you know, I think it's great that, that you're working on an alternative. And I'd love to support you in however you're doing that. But on the other hand, I would also like to see the commission support getting a VSO back in here. Because if there's 2,500 veterans in this community, you could meet with a lot more than eight a month, just on the health issues, if nothing else. So however we can assist in, as a commission, in making sure that we get that VSO replaced, I think we would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Billings?
Jason, thank you for all you do. And thanks for this meeting today. So I have a letter, it's an email from George Vargas, actually dated, it's not to me, but it has the information, I think, that's relevant. Dated December 8th, 2020. He said it was programmed to hire a VSO for the Silver City area, Southwest New Mexico. However, due to COVID situation, everything was placed on hold. Once the situation starts to die down, Governor Grisham will give the order to continue filling the open position. Can you, I don't want to put you at odds with what he's saying here. And I, I understand this is dated information. But what do you think about that? Is that a possibility that the governor could give an order?
I think the governor could give an order. My personal perspective in this is that since COVID actually took off, they've actually seen an increase of about 20% in suicides among veterans. Now, with that statistic, we look at it, and if we just look at it in general population, a veteran, a male veteran, I'm going to just parse it out because this is the way that they broke it out for us, 1.5% more, or sorry, 1.5 times more likely to commit suicide than the general population. When it comes to females that are veterans, they're about 2.1 times. So I think with, with this segregation, in a lot of cases, it's very difficult for veterans that are battling with PTSD to mitigate some of the, the health consequences that they have from that. And I don't think that this is something that should wait until COVID dies down because there are people at risk. And how we go about it, I, I think it's important for us to try to figure out a safe alternative in order to do so. Because, I mean, there's a myriad of other health complications that people have whenever they're exposed to burn pits and all these other things. We don't know all of the, all of the aspects that each veteran has actually come into contact with. And if they do have, if they're susceptible to COVID and a more viral strain that could kill them, I think that we need to take those precautions if necessary. But we still need those services. I think it's absolutely imperative because when we're talking about our veterans' lives at hand.
Do you think, and maybe I should ask Chairman Ponse, but do you think resolution, sorry, resolution from this commission petitioning the governor to fill that position would do any, any good? Because I agree with Commissioner Edwards. While you're working on the substitute program, we need to do everything we can to help you do that, but also work on getting a, a VSO here. Do you think a resolution from the commission would do any good? Or maybe some calls to the lieutenant governor's office or the governor's office?
Commissioner Billings, I believe that would help. That's going to start grabbing even more attention. I feel as though the more attention this gets, the, the more action it will create. So yes, I, I believe that would help. Yeah, essentially.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we should, we should do a resolution or a letter or something requesting the replacement of that. I'm totally in support of that.
Jason, I totally agree with what you said. And I understand COVID and I understand the precautions around it and why they're there. But I agree that sometimes when we have some, a pandemic and what we've seen with COVID, I think this is a time that a lot of people need more help with. And to me, to sit back and say, because of COVID, this, this, and that is not a good answer. So I agree with you. I think that, you know, during times like this, some services need to be provided more. So I appreciate what you said and thank you. And, you know, I tend to agree with Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Billings about any support that we can give for VSO position would be great. And thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners? Thank you, Jason. I appreciate it. And I'll be reaching out to you soon. So I appreciate it. Thanks for everything that you do. Moving on to next item of the agenda, it's going to be under item E, cap entity update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Well, yes, I'm actually on the road. This morning, I had to go to the DMV and you have to make an appointment in Denver. I actually canceled my last one because of a presentation to the commission. So I, I was able to take care of my business and still be able to get on. So I appreciate you allowing me to speak here. What I wanted to do this morning was give a brief update on the New Mexico cap entity. Currently, we are discussing additional amendment to our joint powers agreement, which would allow a little bit more, which actually, to make that up, would actually remove a lot of the language directly related to the New Mexico unit. Now, my report and our actions potentially may be in vain as the New Mexico Legislature Representative McQueen and has, apparently has a bill that is passed to committees already in the House side to not only send the New Mexico unit fund in the care of the Water Trust Board, but also to remove all funding. They haven't made that amendment yet, but it was actually. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Will you hear me?
There was also a request from the speaker to potentially move all funding from the New Mexico cap entity as well. So while I certainly do not disagree with utilizing the New Mexico unit fund or the non-unit projects, I feel that there will be some issues that potentially we would like to discuss. I will first, though, before we get into that, I'd like to make some clarification statements on the New Mexico cap entity. First, I think that if people are aware about the history of the Southwest Mexico Study Group, that group was actually moved forward by actions of the Grant County Commission. Previous Commissioner Henry Torres, he provided a lot of the communications between U.S. Senators Bingman and Domenici with Grant County and with the group. So I think that we need to reflect on, on the history of the cap entity and the succession that we have claimed directly related to the language in the DWSA. So while the, some members of the New Mexico Congress don't necessarily agree with the position, we feel that even our members now are continuously present all the way back from the very beginning. And so that kind of plays into what the New Mexico cap entity is doing now in the ISC, playing the role of the original study group as a, in having consultation with expenditures from the New Mexico unit fund. What I wanted to clarify, though, is that in these hearings and in the conversations and any of the accusations that are continuously being on the New Mexico cap entity, that, you know, it's been 15 years and they spent 15 plus million dollars. And a lot, those aren't necessarily true and extremely inaccurate. And to give you an example, the Interstate Dream Commission didn't even approve a potential New Mexico unit until November of 2014, potentially 30 days prior to what they felt was the Secretary of Materials Office closed, which was pretty much the last day of the last hour. And they actually approved the State of New Mexico going forward with a New Mexico unit. The New Mexico cap entity wasn't formed until 2015. And didn't really have a, while they had a group, they didn't really have any budgeted expenditures until the 2016 fiscal year. So while the people continuously claim that the cap entity has wasted all this time and spent all this money, the Interstate Dream Commission, several previous administrations spent millions of dollars on, on initial studies, in initial engineering valuation that produced a $700 million project, which, you know, turned into the billion dollar project, whatever it potentially may be. And, and then hired the initial contractor to design the New Mexico unit. So there's a lot of things that are inconsistent with how the cap entity was formed and how they were related to the New Mexico unit fund and the expenditures of money. In addition to that, the Interstate Dream Commission, because they wanted to, they chose to be a joint lead in the NEPA process, the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation was charged with providing the NEPA and the draft EIS. Now, the New Mexico cap entity could have done all of the above. They could have hired their own contractual engineer. They could have hired a contractor to do the NEPA and done it for a substantially cheaper price. The NEPA process cost four million plus dollars. A big portion of that was to, to get the Bureau of Reclamation to do what they did. And so if we would have provided a contractor, provided an EIS to the BOR, they would have just charged for the review process for the EIS. So I just wanted to be, to make some clarifications because our membership, number one, the Commission of Grant County, all four commissions in the Southwest Region, we have city councils, we have we have city councils, we have solar water conservation districts, we have a huge amount of, and our irrigation commissions, of course. So we have a huge part of representation. And what people have been doing is giving every one of these entities a black eye, to the point where they say, well, everything that you've done to this point is been a farce and you knew going in that it wasn't able to be done. But we do and do still have representation from the southwest region. And the reason that I have some concerns about losing that representation is the New Mexico cap entity is, of course, defunded, which they went on for years without, you know, I mean, an executive director and a budget to do a lot of things. Matter of fact, Grant County actually, excuse me. Matter of fact, Grant County actually provided a secretary and they provided an attorney. And as the planning director, I was actually the chair of the Subsiscile Water Commission. So that loss of the regional representation, which is probably the biggest fear of mine. I'm not here advocating for my own position. I'm eligible to retire any day. And so potentially, that may be the best thing for me. But I think the loss of that representation, I think, is really huge. Sending the New Mexico unit fund to the Water Trust Board does provide some obstacles for smaller entities to be able to go through the application process. Not only for the application process, but for the project administration process. We already have entities that have been awarded New Mexico unit fund monies that haven't been able to finish their projects. And a large part of that is based on the fact that they don't have the capacity to do the project administration. So there are some concerns about, number one, the Water Trust Board. Representative McQueen was able to try and hand that off to say, well, they can communicate with the Water Trust Board and the New Mexico Finance Authority to be able to try and make it to where these entities have a little bit easier process. However, the Water Trust Board is made up of appointed individuals from state agencies and from choices from the governor's office. So potentially, a change in administration could also change the way that the Water Trust Board does business. While it's set up by statute, the members are appointed by the governor and potentially could provide some obstacles, some bureaucratic obstacles as well as political. So while I'm all for getting the money for infrastructure projects in this region, potentially, the Water Trust Board may not be the easiest way for these projects to get moved forward. I know that there has been continuous talk from our opponents and from other members of the community that says, well, we want to be able to have representation outside of the membership of the cap entity. Well, this completely takes all the regional representation away. Potentially, they're trying to satisfy that by saying, well, the governor potentially may appoint somebody from the southwest region. But I think one member from the southwest region certainly doesn't trump the vast majority of representation that we currently have. My last concern is related to something that Commissioner Edwards brought up last time I discussed, or had an update with the commission last year. And that has to do with if you remove the regional representation, you remove the cap entity and the New Mexico Water Study Group, you potentially open the doors for corporate dollars to develop AWSA water. Now, while the cap entity itself would do some contracting for purchasing the exchange and the credits related to the exchange in Arizona, the Arizona Water Settlements Act is clear on contracting with the user for AWSA water. So I think that while some may think that this is the best thing is to replace our regional representation with a state government, it doesn't necessarily cover all the bases related to the Congressional Act. While the New Mexico unit fund is state monies and is controlled by the legislature, the AWSA, the development of AWSA water, is not. And so I think that there's an issue here. I know that that was a concern of Commissioner Edwards, and I think it should be a greater concern, not only to Commissioner Edwards, but the rest of this commission, as well as the other entities in the region. I think that Commissioner Salas asked me a question last time about potential development of AWSA water to utilize in the member's basin. And we have already analyzed, utilized, and had discussions with Freeport-Mackay about using that infrastructure and build evidence to do exactly that. However, I think that if that water potentially is developed by a corporate agency, we've already had applications in the original application process by corporate agencies. Lionsgate, which I think is actually a California-based company and they actually have, through research, I found that they have Chinese investors. So I think that as valuable as water is in the southwest, potentially, there should be some great concern about development of AWSA water. We already see what happened early on. And I'm certainly not going to badmouth Phillips Dodge or Kennecott Corporation back in the days because that's why a lot of what exists in our area, and they've certainly supported our communities rather well, but they did, you know, buy up and take a lot of the water resources in this area. And it certainly can be done with the AWSA. So in concluding, I provided a resolution to the commission designating, well, the resolution designates the cap entity as successor to the Southwest Mexico Water Study Group, which is, we feel House Bill 200 is in violation of, now, of course, the state of New Mexico and the House of Representatives don't agree with that. However, we feel that we are the true successor and have provided documentation. We also feel that the Water Trust Board shouldn't necessarily replace the Southwest Mexico Water Study Group as a consulting agency with the Interstate Stream Commission. And it kind of goes back to where we were at with our existing joint powers agreement. We had a presentation from the director of the ISC. We have been in several discussions trying to figure out how the regional entity would consult with the ISC on not only prioritizing projects, but also assisting the entities that don't have the capacity to do both the application process and do some of those other things that I already spoke about. We have also spoke with the executive director from the Council of Governments, Priscilla Lucero. We spoke about having an additional funding mechanism. While she's happy about the funding, she did voice some concern about having the ability to, or not having the resources to administer and to apply to do the things she does with smaller entities for an additional funding source. So, Mr. Chairman, I sent you the resolution. The New Mexico cap entity has passed. I certainly would like to request that the commission consider opposing House Bill 200 solely on the basis that even Grant County would be removed from the regional planning process for the New Mexico unit fund. And, Mr. Chairman, that's the end of my presentation today.
Thank you, Anthony. Thanks for your presentation. Do you have any questions from Mr. Gutierrez?
Mr. Chair, can I make a couple of comments?
Yes, sir.
So I think, just to reiterate or add to a couple of things Anthony said. Anthony, I think you can verify that the director of the ISC is assured us that they're working on guidelines that are going to be presented to the New Mexico cap entity soon. Was it, did he say March or April? April 1st, maybe? That would spell out how exactly the cap entity would be working with the Interstate Stream Commission to identify, to plan these local, let's see what it says, to formulate a process for the planning, evaluation, prioritization, and aid to development of potential shovel-ready water utilization projects to meet water supply demands in the southwest planning region of New Mexico that will improve the quality of life and encourage economic development, blah, blah, blah. Okay. So they're working on those guidelines and they're going to have them back to the cap entity in early April. Can you confirm that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Billings, that's correct. He felt that they're pretty busy right now during the legislative session. But potentially, he would have a draft either in the second or third week of March or soon after that.
And, Mr. Chair, I guess probably the only other comment right now I'd like to make is I have serious concerns about the Water Trust Board, not because I have firsthand knowledge, but I've talked to people from here. Probably the person who made the best case against the Water Trust Board, the bureaucracy that exists there, is the city manager from Deming, Aaron Sarah, who's also chair of the Southwest Council of Governments, I think, right? And he's the representative from the city of Deming on the New Mexico cap entity. And I guess, rather than paraphrasing him, I would just say that he talked about the scenarios where the city of Deming and some other groups tried to apply to the Water Trust Board and the nightmare that it was. The, it's too much of a political body. And so instead of having a process that's, not a bureaucracy, put it that way, there was a, they ran, the city of Deming ran into a lot of extra requirements that cost them. He told me $150,000 just to get some money. And the process that should have took a few months took years. And I've also heard the same thing from a former planning director from Grant County. So I share Mr. Gutierrez's concerns about the Water Trust Board being the best avenue to get these non-unit local water utilization projects like, especially, sorry, funded, especially the smaller entities that would have trouble putting the, jumping through all the hoops. So I'm thinking of Hanover, say, with the water problems they've had there. I guess they could go through Grant County, of course. But, you know, even for the Grant County or larger entities like the city or the county, the Water Trust Board is a bureaucracy that presents a lot of obstacles. That was the last thing I was going to say, so I guess I better. Thank you.
You know, to me, I guess, you know, my concern and the concern I get from my constituents is, you know, we are looking at, you know, they're having water. We're looking at Hanover. You know, I know that the town of Silver City would love to replace some of their pumps or update some of their pumps. So I can understand where you're coming from. But if you look at my side here, is can and has the cap entity discussed, you know, releasing some of that money to some of these communities? Or maybe I'm on a different page. But, you know, because those are concerns of mine is, you know, we have these places that really need some of this money to continue providing water for their communities.
I think Mr. Gutierrez could speak to that better than me. But yes, some funding has been made. And then the new amended JPE actually, as he said, changes the very purpose of the cap entity, the very... Go ahead and speak to that, Anthony, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I've spoke with several of those members. I, of course, visited with the city manager from the town of Silver City. I visited with Mayor Stevens from currently about exactly what you're concerned about. And I think that it's a valid concern. And I know that it's continuously brought up that the sole purpose of the cap entity and its members are, is to develop AWSA water and they don't really care about anything else. However, I'm going to disagree with that. As, most of the same members that are on the cap entity now were actually on the Subsiscile Water Commission. When they prioritized projects, then they weren't necessarily identified as non-unit projects, but because it was not a New Mexico unit at the time. But the city of Deming had already proposed to have a New Mexico unit project. Well, the board, the Houston Subsiscile Water Commission, actually prioritized the projects that were related to conservation. They prioritized municipal projects prior to a New Mexico unit at that time. And while our joint powers agreement has language in it, or our previous joint powers agreement, excuse me, had language in it that was provided solely for the purpose of diverting AWSA water for the New Mexico unit. That language was actually proposed by the Interstate Stream Commission. That language was proposed by the Interstate Stream Commission. They said, well, if we're going to do this, we have to put everything we have into the New Mexico unit. So I wanted to be clear on that. And in my conversations with those, they would really like to see a more organized, Mayor Stevens, I got Mayor Stevens, the manager from Deming, the manager of the town of Silver, they all said the same thing. We would like to see a more organized planning and funding mechanism in our regional area that would provide for being able to prioritize the projects that you're talking about. I do have some concerns, Mr. Chairman, about the fact that there are water issues, not only water infrastructure issues, but water issues. I've been speaking to several farmers around the city of Deming, south of the city of Deming, and they continuously tell me they're losing about three foot of aquifer storage a year. Some of them have even dipped into the extremely deep aquifer because the shallower aquifer is no longer being able to provide what they need. But we've seen issues in Hanover and Fiero for years and try to fix those things, but mostly just with band-aids. We see, like the Santa Clara, they continuously have had issues with their wells and even put in an infiltration system that doesn't necessarily assist them. So then they wanted to link up to the Regional Water Association. I actually did that application originally to the Colonias when I was still a planner. So the water issues have been along, have been... So, the water issues have been along, have been a long time coming. The town of Silver City had already had discussions with Freeport-Matt Moran in utilizing their infrastructure to recharge the Frank's Well Field. There's, and now we're seeing the Hurley Project, which was supposed to be an extremely good project for the Tri-City and the town of Silver City because of what gives them some insurance, reassurance that they would have sustainable water supply. And now we're seeing that that water isn't necessarily there and/or it is at point of contamination. So, I think that a larger planning process needs to happen and even for our immediate area. And I don't think that we, I don't think we fixed those by taking the New Mexico Unit Fund and sending it to the Water Trust Board that, well, I've done applications myself to the Water Trust Board. We had an issue out there on the Hila River because of the fires. It was, there was some concerns about taking out one of the county roads in the system. We actually, by the time we went through the Water Trust Board process, by the time we got our engineers approved so they could do something, we had almost already finished the project because it had to be done. We got some emergency permits and we were able to do the project and the money from the Water Trust Board were almost a year behind. So, I think that there is concern. I appreciate your comments about the people in that region and I talked with Mr. Stevens and he said, you know what, if we can, if we can get to a point where we can prioritize the projects, like people really need them, I think that this would be extremely beneficial for everyone involved. And, and so, I think that that's probably the only thing that I can offer as far as an answer to your concerns, Commissioner.
Mr. Gutierrez, would you tell us how much money the Cap Entity's already spent on local projects? Because it slips my mind.
As your Chairman, the Cap Entity didn't necessarily spend, we have this again. Those local projects have been done through the Interstate Stream Commission as non-unit projects. Initially, it was $9.1 million. I think that they've spent a little over $6 million to this point.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and thanks for the clarification. It's the ISC that spends the unit money fund.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Anthony. I appreciate you participating in the meeting. You said a couple of times that this HB200 would send the New Mexico Unit Fund to the Water Trust Board. So, in a way, you know, that's contributing to the very confusion that you are trying to combat. It doesn't send the money to the Water Trust Board. The money stays at the ISC, the Interstate Stream Commission. The legislation would make the Water Trust Board the body that the ISC is required to consult with before spending that money. Now, the ISC can consult with anybody it wants to. This legislation would just say they have to include the Water Trust Board in that consultation process. Isn't that your understanding?
As your Chairman, Commissioner Brown, that's, you're exactly correct. And that was, I did misspeak about that. However, the Water Trust Board will go through their analysis. The New Mexico Finance Authority, in order to make that recommendation, will have, will go through their analysis. I think that they're not necessarily going to do that for free. That was part of the, part of the fiscal impact report that was given to the legislators. And, so, what they would have to do is pay the New Mexico Finance Authority to do their analysis. The Water Trust Board actually make up, is made up of a lot of state agencies also to do analysis. The Interstate Stream Commission would have to do their analysis. So, there's a lot of analyses that's going to have to be done for a single project to move forward. So, I think that, well, you're certainly correct in, the HB200 says a recommendation would come from the Water Trust Board to the Interstate Stream Commission, they would make, they would make their final decision. However, I think that that language also replaces the regional entities that potentially would provide that same recommendation or that same consultation. Now, if, Director, and they could consult with the New Mexico Cap Entity, but if you remove all of the, if you remove their operating expenses, then how are they supposed to, besides review from the Board members, how are they supposed to do any type of analysis themselves to make sure that's exactly what needs to go forward?
Okay, but when you say remove their operating expenses, just to clarify, you're talking about the mention that Speaker Egoth made of an amendment that might reduce, that might defund the Cap Entity. Is that what you're talking about?
That's correct. That's correct. And actually, the replacement, I mean, to me, and if you're, if we're in the discussion of the, the, those hearings in the House side, on those committee hearings, they discussed replacement of our regional board. It is said continuously to replace the regional board with a Water Trust Board.
Okay.
And I think that that is, that's what the major concern is.
So, I just want to clarify the one comment about defunding. That request, that suggestion went nowhere. The bill sponsor deferred on that and, you know, my guess is that that's not going to happen. So, I just want to make sure when you mention something like that, people who listen to you realize that's a possibility. Definitely not part of the bill right now. And my guess is it won't be part of the bill on the Senate side either. Just so you know that. And I want to say a couple of things about the Water Trust Board, because you've painted a picture of a large bureaucracy, which, you know, of course, it's a bureaucracy. That's what we require to spend government funds correctly. But that bureaucracy has funded, recommended for funding, the legislature actually approves these funding recommendations. The Village of Columbus, for flood control projects, a couple of years in a row, very recently, this year, last year, it's recommending a ditch, the new model ditch in Verton, for funding this year. The City of Deming, despite Mr. Sarah's comments, they got recommended for funding in 2020 and funded for their water conservation project. So, it is doing its job and the process that it goes through on those projects, I believe, is much more complex than what it will have to go through in vetting projects to recommend to the ISC. And I don't think we need to spend much time on this because it's speculative at this point, but since the Water Trust Board would not actually be funding those projects out of any fund that it controls, it would focus its vetting process, I think, more on the technical aspects and the relative priority of different kinds of projects, which is something they have expertise in doing. So, I personally trust that they could do that job. And when I hold it up against the job I've seen the Cap Entity do over the last five years, my guess is they can do it more impartially and more efficiently than what we've seen here. But I do have one more question, and that's because I did not understand what you said in response to Commissioner Edwards' concern about private development of AWSA water. My recollection of the Arizona Water Settlements Act is it requires that any development of AWSA water be for the benefit of the members of the Cap Entity. So, either I'm wrong at that point or I maybe misunderstood the concern you expressed when you said we should all be concerned about private development of that water. Wouldn't it still be for the benefit of the members of the Cap Entity even if it were a private developer?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brown, I think the language is not necessarily for the benefit of the members of the Cap Entity. I think the language has to do with beneficial use in southwest New Mexico. So, potentially, somebody could develop AWSA water and in the development of AWSA water, then if an entity would need that water, potentially, they may have to purchase that water. If you develop the infrastructure, well, there is language in there that says the New Mexico Cap Entity would own the infrastructure related to the New Mexico unit. I'm assuming there would have to be some sort of agreement or contract, but that doesn't hold, that doesn't prevent a corporate entity from developing and purchasing the water. All that does is say, there's language that has for the infrastructure, there's language for the beneficial use in southwest New Mexico, but it doesn't necessarily say that you can prevent that from being developed by a corporate entity. That, to my knowledge, that's, that would be the correct way to take a look at it, Commissioner.
So, that corporate entity would come in and invest the money required to build some method of diverting water that would meet the requirements of delivery downstream at low-flow times, presumably would have to meet the terms of the COFA. And that entity would also pay for the exchange rights to Arizona users. And then your idea is they would turn around and sell the water for beneficial use in the Ford County region?
Yeah, the only, the only other thing that I would like to mention is that they could use existing infrastructure. If you utilize existing infrastructure, it would actually make the NEPA process a lot easier in that potentially you would only have to have an environmental analysis and not go through the entire NEPA process. So, if you use existing infrastructure, potentially, you could, you could take and deliver that water. You're correct in that they would have to pay that exchange cost, but when you're looking at municipal water or water directly related to municipal water, you're, then the cost of AWSA water becomes a lot more feasible than it is for agricultural use.
So, I'm going to, some of I go out on a limb here, some may be surprised to hear me say this, but I would say if a private entity can pull that off, they can invest their own money, they take their own risk, and they end up supplying water to our municipalities, I don't see the problem there. It stays in the Ford County region. It doesn't get shipped to El Paso, Albuquerque, stays here. I'm not sure what the fear is you were suggesting we should have, but private investment to make a private return on something that provides a good for all of us? Hey? I'm not opposed to that. Okay, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, what did you have?
I do. So, the way Harry just articulated that, I'm not necessarily opposed to that either. What I'm opposed to is having the water leave the Ford County area for profit for a private entity. I have a clarification and, you know, it's sometimes hard for me to follow this complex stuff auditorily, but I think what we just said, or what was just said, so we're talking about a private investor building the infrastructure and paying for the exchange rights and all the things that have to be done under the terms of the AWSA to then provide water for the Ford County area, right?
I believe that's the scenario that you two were discussing. It's certainly what I was saying.
Okay. Then I heard Anthony say it would be much less expensive to do that exact same thing with existing infrastructure. Is that what I heard?
That's correct, Commissioner Edwards.
So, maybe I'm missing something here, but why the hell weren't we discussing that five years ago? You guys have been spending all this money on a billion-dollar project.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Edwards, we actually did discuss that five years ago. We discussed it with Freeport, Matt Moran. It was part of our discussions to be able to utilize existing infrastructure. Number one, they were uncertain about utilizing their infrastructure, they were uncertain about what would be contained in the NEPA process. They weren't necessarily willing at that time to enter into any type of negotiation that would potentially affect their existing operations. So, that's why it wasn't, that's why it wasn't, that's why it didn't move forward. We certainly had those discussions.
So, to continue to talk about that as a potentially viable solution is an obfuscation, in my opinion, because we don't have any clue at this point whether it is actually a possibility. We've already dismissed it as a possibility. One of the things that I find really challenging about this conversation is that some of it is extremely necessary conversation that we have to have about our water future. In fact, a lot of it is extremely necessary conversation that we have to have about our water future. I'm not wildly excited about the Water Trust Board, although I think that, yeah, I'll just say I'm not wildly excited about the Water Trust Board, but I'm not wildly excited about the Cap Entity either. And so, one of the challenges of this conversation for me is it's, A, a conversation that we need to be having in the Ford County region and it's, to some degree, being had for us in Santa Fe by only offering us the option of the Water Trust Board or the Cap Entity. It's not a question, it's simply a statement.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Billings?
I, some, I agree with what Commissioner Edwards just said. I think that's what they're offering. The actual language in House Bill 200 introduced by Representative McQueen says the Water Trust Board shall evaluate projects, including their environmental impacts, proposed within the southwest planning region of New Mexico, and shall recommend projects to the Interstate Stream Commission. You know, that's, that's pretty clear that they're going to have a lot of, the Water Trust Board is going to have a lot of authority there. I just, yeah, I think that if Representative McQueen, or actually, our local representatives would get together and discuss amongst this Ford County area, if not the Cap Entity, then the local governments, I think they could come up with a better solution than the state Water Trust Board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner? Thank you, Anthony, for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to, moving down the agenda here, 100 discussions. F is going to be the 2022 budget discussion.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I'd like to report that as of January 31st, we are in line with our are in line with our projected revenues and the budget. We've actually received 51.75% of our revenues, and our expenditures are at 48, 49% of our budgeted expenses. So we are pretty much in line with our approved budget. I would like to note that, you know, I did mention last meeting that there was a loss in revenue in copper production, but I would like to point out that we did have an increase in revenue in the Grant County equalization of $197,000 and an additional $42,000 in the fixed local GRT distribution, which is HB6. So we are able to at least make up for that loss in copper for this fiscal year.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, those two sources that you mentioned?
Okay, the first one was the Grant County equalization, and the other one was the fixed local GRT distribution, which is through HB6.
And in Grant County equalization, that's something the state does to redistribute funds to counties, based on what? Sorry.
The complicated formula.
Based on a complicated formula?
It's one of those.
But somehow, the end product of this complicated formula was we had $100,000 some more than we expected?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
$197.
$197?
$197, I thought you said 100, answer.
I thought she said 107 also.
No, 197.
Okay.
Nice.
It's this whole mask thing.
Yes.
Okay, that sounds like really good news.
Okay, so we are in line with our projections.
That amount was already part of the 51 point whatever percent?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess we were going to discuss what our plans are for the budget for fiscal year '21, '22. So what I propose to do is here, I'm going to be sending out budget requests to all the departments, and what I will do is I'll set a deadline for them to submit their request, and then from there, schedule a hearing with the commission and have them come in here and present their requests. And the commission can at that time let us know what you feel is a priority, or what your wants and needs are for the fiscal year, including the projects that you may have. And we'll incorporate all those requests together, and then I can develop a budget, and then we can at that point know more or less where we are also on our revenue collections. And then we will discuss our revenues for the next fiscal year and have a little bit more input, excuse me, from the commissioners, if that's the way you wish to do it. And then you can give me ideas now as to what you would like to see, or not even now, but down the road sometime by March. Let me know what, you know, what you intend on wanting to see budgeted this fiscal year. And we can work on the budget. That way we'll have at least two hearings with the commission prior to submitting a final budget, or if there's anything that you suggest or recommend for me to hold differently.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Edwards?
Are you anticipating those meetings, the two hearings with the commission, might be the April work session and the May work session? Is that what you're thinking of?
That's what I'm going to, geared to have something developed by then.
You know, for me, I mean, I understand, you know, one of the biggest things that I've been thinking about is how long have our employees been waiting for things to get better? You know, and me focusing on what's coming up, you know, things may not be getting better, especially in 2023. I'm not sure when that, you know, we're gonna get the full effect from the mine, but I'm assuming it's gonna be around that timeframe. You know, so, you know, to me, I think focusing more probably this year on employees, and looking at, you know, some of the thing that goes along with it is employee development, so we don't catch ourselves in certain situations, getting people, which I'm talking about training, compensation for their work or their wages. You know, to me, our projects are very important, we all represent certain districts, you know, we have to be careful and look at all those projects, but I think we're hitting the time to, we're, you know, my opinion is moving forward for our employees to see what we can do for them, or how we can go about it, even some of our department directors, you know, and I understand negotiations, all that, we can't jump before that, but, you know, I think our focus should be more on that. I'd be honest with the commissioners, as far as our budgets, I think staying where we're at, as far as the operating budgets and all that, I'm good with that piece. If we focus more on employee and employee development, whether it's other things, because I just have this feeling that come down the road, there may be some things that we're not gonna be able to afford. I've always been, and I think every commissioner on here, I've heard one time or another, focus on development, training. So that's more where I'm leaning at, if you wanna hear what I'm thinking for right now. May change down the road once we get the numbers, whatever, but right now, that's where I'm headed.
Okay.
Commissioner Salas.
I wanna mirror what you said, you know, I really think that it's important, but let me just get a clarification for my own. So if we wanted to add anything to the budget, is it, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul at this point? We would have to look for some reductions or something somewhere else to initiate something new?
Yeah, basically, yes, that's the way, because we're pretty much budgeted to where we can meet the cash match requirement. Okay, sorry about that. And then the biggest thing that I notice is what determines a lot of what our budget is gonna take place in the next fiscal year, not only how revenue is going to play out, but the cash carryover. So if there is a lot less expenses in the previous year, you know, the biggest, the biggest savings and expenses that I see is going to be benefits and wages, correct? Because, I mean, employees are coming and going, and we have that savings. So if we have that cash reserve, not the cash reserve, the cash balance extremely high, that's going to determine what we're going to be able to do in the following fiscal year. And then that would avoid from having to pay Peter or robbing from Peter to pay Paul.
So what's our timeline? When do we submit the final budget?
June, June 1st. That's the preliminary.
The preliminary, and then when does the final?
The final budget must be submitted by July 31st.
Well, I know that you don't have a lot of extra time, but in going also, I would like to see what fiscal impact raises would cost us, first as a percentage, and then as a fixed amount. So, you know, to help drive some ideas.
Okay.
The only, I mean, the only thing, that's what I had mentioned, the only thing with that is, you know, we are under, and I think negotiations, I don't know when those happen, but, you know, a lot of that's gonna be dictated through negotiations and the union contract. Getting the preliminary number, I mean, that's, I agree with that. We just, and that's why I sort of mentioned, you know, we can't put that before we know exactly where we're headed as far as negotiations, and I think that's gonna be left to, you know, our county manager and whoever they represent. But, I mean, hopefully, we can get some numbers and hopefully help.
Well, at least, I think it will help make some decisions, because, again, one of the, my key wishes for this next year is the addition of an assistant for Charlene, and I sort of would like to know the possibilities of that. Actually, I would like to know if that is possible with the current budget, okay? And then if not, in addition to our new budget.
Okay. Actually, that is possible with this current budget, because we had already budgeted for that position. We just never filled the position, because we were waiting to see what our copper production was going to look like in our property taxes. So it is in the budget, and we do have funds to be able to hire this assistant.
So, Mr. Chair, my question, I guess, would be is if that has to be an action item that's put into, you know, one of our meeting agendas?
You know, I think that action was already taken. The thing with this is exactly what, we left it up to our county manager to see, basically forecast where we're gonna be, and we left it up to her to say, okay, this is a time or this isn't the time, because of budget and constraints and what we were unsure of. So I think that our county manager here soon can probably say yea or nay, but leaving that up to her. But that has already been voted, it was already an item, and go from there, no?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'd like to clarify what you approved. You approved an HR director, did not approve an assistant county manager. That was the action that was taken. So if, you know, I've had one-on-one discussions with several of you over the course of the last nine months to a year, you know, perhaps it makes more sense, and I agree completely with Commissioner Salas, an assistant maybe with an HR emphasis, but what was approved was an HR director.
Okay.
So we would have to amend that then?
Or give me the flexibility to hire what we need, that's entirely up to you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I was just gonna say what Charlene just said, as far as I'm concerned, we should not be in the business of approving specific positions. We should be in the position of making recommendations, saying this is what we want, and approving budgets to make that happen, but not approving specific positions. So if what we need to do is clarify our prior approval of an HR director to mean any position reporting to you that would also have a large HR function, then I'd say, let's go ahead and clarify that with some formal vote at the next meeting, but that is certainly what my intention was.
You see, and that was my thing was, sort of my comment to, well, that's county manager, but I didn't know we had to take, I guess I forgot, I'm not sure. You know what I mean? To me, if we said HR, but she comes in and says, I need an assistant, I think that should be left up to her, did we tie her down by her vote? I don't know.
But I also thought that part of our duties were a policy and structure, and I thought that this would fall under that purview. But it doesn't matter, we all agree, county manager agrees, so I'd just like to see, you know, if we take the action. And leaving it up to our county manager.
Okay, so, yeah, different subjects. First, I wanted to follow, I guess with the three of you, Commissioner Salas and Ponse and Manager Webb, to what extent are budgetary constraints a problem for the kind of personnel development training that we're talking about? Do we run up against money constraints, or do we run up against time constraints more often?
I don't think that we've ever run into money constraints. We've always found funding to provide the training that elected officials and department heads have asked for, for their employees. I will tell you that we can offer all kind of training, but you can't necessarily force everything on everyone, because then the union comes back and says, that's a term and condition of employment, blah, 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 I get into that argument. You know, we've thrown a lot of things out there that employees just flat refuse there, they show no interest. So, you know, we have to find a way to find things that appeal to them. So one of the notes I wrote down, and I'll get this together, I'll get it from elected officials and department heads, is to provide you a list of what's actually already happening. And I will tell you that it is department head, elected official driven. I will tell you that any department head that answers to me, they know that that's a priority of mine, it always has been, and we try to find relevant type training for their position. And some of the positions we have are just odd, and there's not a lot of training that you can find that is specific to what they do. One example is Ray Castillo in the planning office. He does a whole lot of things, so trying to find training, and, you know, we actually sat down and had conversations with him, well, what do you want? You know, he knows how to do his job, but, so it's finding things that they, that appeal to them to actually make them a better employee. You know, some of them are content right where they're at, they have no desire to move up. So we've been having a lot of discussions amongst my department heads about what does that look like, and how do we appeal to them, and how do we continue to provide things that make them a more valuable employee? And it's, some of it's a little bit of a challenge, but I think it would be helpful if you saw what we're doing, and maybe I will also request of them is what else do you wanna see? And then we can kind of try to put a monetary figure on what that might look like. So that would be part of a budget package that we analyze and look at.
So, and I understand what you're saying, and to a point I agree, but when we did the budget last year, my understanding was, or if I remember correctly, a lot of our departments had a $2,500 training budget. You know, so to me, I know what you're saying as far as specific training, I understand. To me, putting more into the training budget, you know, it's up to each individual employee to decide whether they wanna, you know, further their career or not, but at the end, if they get led behind, that was their choice. My thing is, you know, what can you do nowadays with a $2,500 training budget? One employee can blow through that right away. So my thing is increasing that, giving the department heads, giving the elected officials and the employees a little more leeway in case they do wanna take advantage of that. Because sometimes, and I can tell you this from experience, you know, when I was with the Town of Silver, was if I have a $10,000 training budget, what was I, and I don't know the wording to it, but what was I thinking, I can't go over that, so I have to leave out some training, because that's the number that was given. And I'm not saying give a number that's outrageous, but increasing those areas of our budget, I think would help.
So I will make sure that I include that in my correspondence with the department heads and elected officials. I will tell you in the last, last year's budget, nobody asked for more training money. And so I, we'll do a little more thorough analysis about what's being spent. I might go back to the previous year, because this year would not be a real fair year to look at, because if there was any training, it was canceled, put off, maybe it was changed to virtual, it didn't cost anything. So we'll take a look at that and try to give you a better picture of what's happening, what their desires are, what their wishes are, because they know better than anybody what needs to happen. So we'll work on that and get you a little bit clearer package of what that appears to be.
And sometimes the training might not be what is required to do their current job, right? So that they aren't the best person to think about what they need, but rather what's required for them to replace a department director, for example, or for them to fill in when someone else is absent, right? Cross-training. So, yeah, it's not just a question for the employees themselves.
Well, I didn't mean the employees, I meant department heads, elected officials.
Okay.
And I will tell you that Linda and I have done as much as we possibly can in our departments, especially with her staff, to be able to cross-train. She has three different individuals that could do payroll, so, you know, we're doing our best to cross-train as much as we possibly can.
Excellent.
And we continue to try to, like, spread that idea out and do that as best we can with what we have. But we'll work on something that gives you a better idea of what's going on.
If it's still on training, go ahead, Commissioner Salas, I have two other things.
Oh, no. Well, it's really a follow-up to what you said.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I also envisioned, you know, giving exposure, management exposure to an underling. Just like right now, we have two positions, two key positions, which would, that would give the opportunity for that person that was exposed to at least be a viable interim, a knowledgeable and viable interim to keep us going until there's a really good search and, and then the best candidate is chosen. That would certainly alleviate maybe some anxiety about getting somebody in right now. So that's what I... And maybe there's an incentive that we can offer for that person that is willing to do that. That's what I...
Okay, thanks. I think this work session has been exactly what I was hoping for these extra work sessions. So that's preface to giving you more tasks for our next work session. You already have on your list educating us about the copper production tax and how that's calculated. Since Commissioner Salas brought up the question of raises, I think it would be worth devoting some time to what's going on with our classification and step salary structure that has been, I think, underway for four years, at least. I mean, if you count the classification study, five years, I think. Maybe I'm remembering wrong. I thought it hit my desk soon after I took office. In any case, we all extolled the virtues of what Sheriff Gomez did and said that we want to see something here. So to me, that's the way, that's the context in which to talk about raises. I think that's it.
Anyone else?
Are you asking for permission or comments?
No, not yet. But so I guess we're done with the FY 22 budget discussion. Okay? So moving on to commissioner reports? Is that where you wanted to head, Mr. Billings?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Billings, go ahead. I assume you have a report.
Yeah, sorry. No, just one, I just wanted to say one thing. And that's to congratulate the U.S. Department of Transportation on their decision to bring Advanced Air another two years to Grant County. That subsidy, government subsidy, is huge. And I've talked to people who don't realize that the cost of their flight is even subsidized. But those flights, according... You know, I can't figure it out exactly, but it looks like that there's a subsidy of over $3,000 on every flight. So that makes traveling, and simpler to figure than that, if you realize that it costs about $70 to fly to Albuquerque. And then I think the new price is, looks like $90 to Phoenix. That's a pretty cheap way to travel. I think it's huge. And with all that Advanced Air has done, they're nice planes, they're good service. I think it means a lot to Grant County. And I almost wish I could help Advanced Air advertise. So we could fill up those planes. And hopefully with COVID, the end of COVID, we'll see more re-employment and get some economic activity here in Grant County from that service. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Billings. Commissioner Salas?
I wanted some quick comments on stuff that we discussed today. You know, I don't know if the bill, what was that, 200, is going to lay mute everything that we've discussed. But it just scares me that it's all going to involve more government red tape, possibly. And in the end, it's going to affect the ability of our county to access anything or just delay it, you know, by a great time. So I wish we had a crystal ball that we could identify and say, this is the right thing. But at this point, I don't think, since it's up for a vote today, right?
This week, we expect, on the House floor. And then it goes to the Senate.
I think that would lay, you know, our concerns. I don't think there's much we can do at this point. And the other thing that I wanted to say about, talk about was the veterans. The VA is a complex monster to deal with. And many veterans that I know pretty much just given up. Their requirements and all the red tape to access things is hard. Much as the government, he was talking about PTSD. And so it seems that one of the main focuses is to keep those unknown so that there won't be any claims for that. There's no website by the government that says, you know, if you contacted Agent Orange, contact this. If you suffer some mental conditions, contact this. If you need whatever, you know? I tell you, in my instance, you know, I joined the group from El Paso so that going to specialties would be quicker. I could go to Las Cruces or El Paso. But there's been a clinic here in Silver City. I can't go to it because I belong to El Paso and this clinic comes out of the Albuquerque area. You know, it just seems like in this day and age, that wouldn't be an issue, but it is. So that's why all my appointments are in Las Cruces and El Paso area. And at least for me, it's not an issue that I can't make it. But for a lot of veterans, it is. You know, and sometimes those just become obstacles. And it seems like the more red tape they push up upon you, the more frustration until you find you just give up. Anyway, so I do think that a rep here is very, very important. Not only that, communications, you know. At this point, it's great that the university has a rep there and is available to help veterans. I just wish that an intensity would go out to the rest of the county. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Salas. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to address Commissioner Salas' concern about the delay, the potential delay for funding needed water projects in this area. And in my mind, that's exactly why we should support HB 200. The cap entity has shown considerable antipathy to funding these projects in any speedy way. There are many members of the cap entity who seem to think the correct strategy is to live off the interest in the New Mexico Unit Fund, continue to fund existing cap entity operations, and not put any money towards water development, water utilization projects in this area. And I'm not saying that's a majority. The fact is, I don't know if it's a majority or not. Because they haven't taken a vote on that idea. But the way we're going to rest that money for projects anytime soon is through this bill, I believe. And I think it's a shame that we're having to get a statewide body to intervene to make that happen. But that's just the way it is, unfortunately. So that's my perspective on that. Thanks, I don't have any other comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I too want to talk about the veterans thing a little bit. And I want to thank Commissioner Billings for bringing this up originally, two or three months ago, about the VOS. I think I said then, and I'm going to repeat myself, I'm appalled that the decision-makers would think that the pandemic meant that we should have less services, not more. It just, that kind of thinking just really, truly boggles my mind. Especially when you are dealing with people who are already having issues that are only going to be exacerbated by things like isolation and illness and fear and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So I really appreciate this conversation. I would really like for us to, sooner rather than later, submit either a letter or a resolution to the state asking specifically for a VOS for Grant County. And I don't know that there's anything that we can do as a county to address the incredible amount of bureaucracy and red tape that is the VA. But, you know, the same kind of thinking that created the VOS situation is the same kind of thinking that says that Commissioner Salas now has to go to El Paso, even though there's a VA clinic in Silver City. I will also say that the VA requires that when there is a clinic in a community, such as the VA clinic here in Silver City, that if there are services that that VA clinic can't offer, that they contract with another entity to do that. And they are trying to contract with the hospital to provide some of those services. But the incredible amount of bureaucracy and red tape on that as well is just mind-boggling to me. And so in the meantime, 10% of our population that served the country, served our country, doesn't have adequate services. I would like for us to put whatever weight we may have as a commission behind fixing that. I said earlier that, you know, I talked a little bit earlier about the cap entity thing. And I am not an expert on this process by any means. I have spent an inordinate amount of time as a commissioner trying to figure out the whole cap entity, you know, water projects thing. And the thing that I keep going back to in my mind, and I was trying to think of this, what was the Southwest Working Group or what was that called?
It was the Southwest Water Study Group and the Southwest New Mexico Stakeholders.
Southwest Water Study Group. You know, I keep going back to what, to what people tell me about the Southwest Water Group. And the function that they had as coming together, discussing what the needs were of the four county area, coming up with dozens and dozens of water projects that they prioritized, et cetera. Somehow, we need to get back to that sort of collaborative conversation on this topic. I actually am in support of HB 200 because I don't think the cap entity is the body to do that. But I'm not, I don't think the Water Trust Board is either. And so I'm very torn about this. And I would really, really like for us to be able to hit the reset button on these conversations and figure out a way to manage our water issues in the four county area together in a collaborative way. And I think that sometimes what happens is, you know, what's happened with the cap entity and there's so much baggage with that organization that I think it would actually be better to start over than to keep trying with that same organization. Even, I think, well, I guess what I'm trying to say is sometimes you just can't erase the history of a body of people. And it's better to, I don't even mean a body of people. And a body, policymaking body, and it's sometimes better to just start over. That was kind of rambling. Somehow, when we start talking about this water stuff, my brain is all over the place. So at any rate. Oh, and then I wanted to just say, I agree with Harry. I think that what happened today was exactly what I imagined might happen on these work sessions. And I think this was a very powerful start to some really good collaborative work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. You know, I just want to, you know, couple of things here. You know, it is disheartening, you know, what we hear about our veterans. And I'm sure it's not just happening in Grant County, it's probably all over. And I agree a lot with Commissioner Edwards as far as what's going on. But sometimes I sit back and I hear it, you know, I hear it in our hospital meetings. Well, COVID, we can't do, in COVID, in COVID. I understand COVID. I mean, I've done public announcements for COVID. I understand the wearing of the mask. I understand trying to get a handle on this. I understand all that. But sometimes I wonder, there's some services that still need to continue. And I don't think that we should use COVID as an excuse to continue some of these services. Especially when it's coming to mental well-being of a person. When it's coming to overdoses, when it's coming to suicide. So I'm thinking, well, I'm not going to say that. You know, when do we say, okay, we do have a situation with COVID? We need to get a handle on it. But, you know, we need to get a handle on other things going around in our world. Because the world keeps going. People continue. And I think we somehow, as society, as a world, as a country, nation, whatever, that we need to start doing a little better with things around that COVID. You know, lately, I have been getting a lot of calls from veterans about certain things that are going on. I don't know how to fix it, but I will try to do the best I can. I know it's, a lot of it's federal. You know, I wasn't aware of what Commissioner Salas brought up, you know? He goes to El Paso, you know, things like that. I mean, things that need to be streamlined, things that need to be worked on. So I'm going to continue to look into this and research some of this and see how, you know, not only as a commission, but as an individual commissioner or a person can help with this. You know, HB 200, you know, I look at sort of a little way that I'm not the expert in it. What I do know about it is that, and what does bother me is our communities that do need certain things, you know, Hanover, Hurley. You know, the mind continues to provide, you know, water to a community. Those are the things that are, my constituents have told me, you know? So I think that those are the things that we should be working on. I understand farming and farmers need it also. I'm not against that. But seeing and hearing what Grant County has gone through, especially Hanover, I would like to see something come down this way to alleviate some of those problems. The other thing that I'm looking at is Charlene, if you can set up a meeting sometime next week between us for an hour. I need education on the process, and I know you know it. And you can put me on the right track on this. But do that. The other thing is, please refresh my memory. Because I just got an email earlier about the flags that's been flown in Arenas Valley. What was the final outcome? Because I'm going to, I need to answer this email. And I don't want to overstep or put something that's not true.
I don't have a final legal opinion, written a legal opinion. But Brad is leaning to exactly what Harry spoke to at the last meeting, that it appears to be their right to express their First Amendment right.
Okay, well, what I'll do is I'll just email this, these people and let them know that it's being looked at by county attorney. That's it on my part. If anybody has anything else? Thank you. Thank you. Do I?
Can I say something really quick?
Yes.
I'm sure I don't have to do this, but I'm going to anyway, just remind you guys that we have a meeting at 4:30 this afternoon here in this room.
It's a good policy.
Especially for me. Do I have a motion for, if nobody has anything else, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second. Second by Commissioner Brown, discussion. Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.